Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council Meeting on March 25th, 2024. I'll call this meeting to order, and I would ask that you all rise for the singing of our national anthem.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land, true patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise to north, strong and free from far and wide. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Tenille Towns for the singing of our national anthem. And if you did not hear, she's coming home in November to have a concert at the Bonnet's Energy Center. Tickets are available online. I'd like to now take the opportunity to read our land acknowledgement. The city respectfully acknowledges the Beaver Cree, Dene, and Métis people as the original caretaker of these lands and surrounding areas. We are grateful to live, learn, work, and play on Treaty VIII territory within Turtle Island and acknowledge these lands have been home to diverse and sovereign First Nations and Inuit nations since time immemorial. Thank you for that opportunity. Moving on to the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes and our recognizing councillor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move the council to adopt the minutes of the city council meeting held March 11th as presented.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. I see no one in the queue with questions or concerns, so I'll call the question. Please vote.
Pressy in favor?
Tison in favor?
And that carries unanimously. Moving on to the adoption of today's agenda, recognize councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I move the council adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you for that councillor O'Toole. Seeing no one in the queue with errors or omissions or additions, I'll call the question. Please vote.
Pressy in favor?
Tison in favor?
And that carries unanimously. I will ask you two, do you need a moment to get your e-scribes up or you're having issues?
No, it's not working for other than, yeah.
Okay, we'll continue going on that. Next item on our agenda is delegations. And just for those who are watching and may not be aware, delegations, there's two options. You can come to the 3:00 PM meeting, and if we're having a 6:00 PM meeting, that is always an option. Today, we are not having an evening session, so the only option was 3:00 PM. We do ask that you let us know ahead of time. There's a form online. It's relatively simple. We just ask what you want to talk about, a few simple questions, and then you submit that, you get added to our agenda. We have one delegation who let us know ahead of time that she wanted to speak to council today, so I'll ask Ms. Wendy Everett to come on up.
Hi.
Hello. When you get settled, set up, our Legislative Services is handing out the information, so take your time to get set up. Your mic is already on, but I do ask once you're settled in, pull it a little bit close to you so everybody can hear you online and in the chambers, and take five minutes, present to council, and then council may have questions. Thank you very much. All right, so I'll just wait for Ms. Hanson to get the documents handed out to council, and then I'll get you to start.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Oh, we're happy when people come.
Thank you. It's a beautiful day.
All right, council, so you have a presentation in front of you, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Everett for, yeah.
Good afternoon, mayor, madam mayor and councillors. I think I know everybody pretty much. Can you hear me? Thank you.
Yes, as long as you bring that close to you, we're good.
Okay.
And it slides on the table, so you can pull it right up.
Okay. My name is Wendy Everett. Thank you for the honor and the privilege of presenting for your vote of approval to my proposed amendment regarding the garbage dumpster pickup to the Noise, Nuisance, and Public Disturbance bylaw C-1103 of the City of Grand Prairie, which is to prohibit certain nuisances, disturbances, and activities creating noise, to abate the incidence of noise, and to restrict when certain sounds such as metal garbage dumpsters being dropped and shook noisily, which disturbs the peace, comfort, repose, and affects the health and wellness of the neighborhood, may be made for the apartment known as Prairie Sunrise Towers on Resources Road, 9649-94 Avenue, Grand Prairie, by the now contracted operator Prairie Disposal Limited, which occurs anywhere from 6:30 AM Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays weekly, to a more appropriate, when the parking lot would be empty, pickup time of 10 AM. I have, over the past 10 years, tried to talk with Prairie Disposal regarding a proposed garbage dumpster pickup time postponement, or for the drivers not to be as loud. Tammy of Prairie Disposal's response is to hang up, because they have done this, woken people up for 20 years so far, hoping that the humans will continue to not know that it doesn't or shouldn't hurt to try, or that they can ask for change and just continue to accept this behavior from a contracted garbage truck driver and a company and an apartment leasing company that really do know subliminally what they're doing to us humans. Yes, the environment is being taken care of, but what about the humans that they profit from? I ask at what cost should garbage come before humans? Communicating today with city council openly, honestly, and with proven facts, to vote to amend at no cost the garbage dumpster pickup postponement at Prairie Sunrise Towers. I will provide, due to time constraints, the proven medical damage, constant sleep interruptions, are seriously affecting our friends and neighbors, which is and will continue to lead to many more of us to additional medical costs if not taken seriously now. I, Wendy Everett, propose that an amendment such as, quote, "Garbage cans, dumpsters, or similar objects are not and will not be allowed to disturb the peace of the residents in such a manner as to annoy disturbance within a residential district earlier than 10 AM for the health and wellness of the citizens who have the right not to be disturbed by noise that is affecting humans medically, mentally, physically, and emotionally, as well as financial repercussions daily." This is now becoming a widespread and ultimately with seriously health consequences problem in our society. Thank you for the honor and the privilege today of presenting this no-cost proposed amendment with world-renowned, trend-setting Grand Prairie is and always will be the greatest place to be, and also, if anything needs to be accomplished, this city is the one to ask, and it will get done. I am confident that this no-cost, simple postponement of garbage dumpster pickup time to 10 AM would be another feather in our cap for Grand Prairie with this win-win, life-saving vote of approval. This concludes my comments, and thank you, your worship.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for your words. You are speaking the language of council. We too believe this is an incredible place to live and that we believe the Can Do Spirit originated here and continues on with inner veins here, so thank you for that. We appreciate those words.
That's why I came with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I know it.
I think it's a really good conversation. I will ask council now for questions for the delegation for you, and just for your information, Ms. Everett, if council has questions for administration, we do that at the end of our meeting during the delegation portion. So right now is an opportunity for council to ask you questions, recognizing councillor Tison.
Hi.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton, and thanks for coming in today, Ms. Everett.
Thank you.
Nice to see you again.
Nice seeing you.
Yes. So questions, so this is happening outside Sunrise Towers, so I actually have two questions. This pickup, is that for all garbage in all residential neighborhoods?
Just behind Prairie Sunrise. I don't live there, but I'm a block away, and I'm still hearing it.
Okay. Oh, that's fair.
That is fair.
And then my other question for you is, you said that you talked to Prairie Disposal. Prairie Disposal, from what I know, is contracted via Aquaterra to do all the garbage pickup. Have you tried talking to Aquaterra's?
Yeah, they won't do anything either, and they say that that's not their problem. It's not Aquaterra at all. So it's the city, and Aquaterra will not do anything. They don't want anything to do with this.
Okay.
No. I've tried. I've honestly tried, and it's been 10 years, and it is affecting health, wellness. There's like, there's two pages here of what the sleep interruptions do.
Two?
Uh-huh. There's a lot. I thought maybe you guys want to help me read it, just to, there's a lot. Like, there's the ADHD, there's post-traumatic stress, there's chronic long and short-term disrupted sleep. Elderly humans need at least seven to nine hours of uninterrupted sleep, and as you're older, you cannot get to sleep until 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, so if these start clang and at 6:30, you're not, you're not a happy camper. And then it goes to your type 2 diabetes, your weight-related obesity, metabolic syndrome, autonomic, and neuroendorphin stress symptom, emotional neurobiological changes, and cancers. This is what we're going to have, cancers of the breast, ovaries, prostates, and these are all cause mortality, which is the death from any cause in a specific group of people.
Ms. Everett, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just, I have a lot of people that have questions for you.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
So there's a lot, two pages there.
Councillor Bosch.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Nice to see you, Ms. Everett.
Yes.
Hi. I have two questions for you. Have you, in the past 10 years or more recently, ever contacted enforcement services in regards to the noise level portion of it?
Yeah, though they went over and talked to them the one time, lots of times they've done it before the 7:00 to 9:00. So yes, by law, has been called a month ago, a month ago.
And what, what's the response?
They go in and tell them not to come from 7:00 to 9:00, but they're not going to do anything unless city council says, let's do it at 10:00. Like, what's wrong with, why are you waking up 500 people at that side of the building and all our neighbors at Brody Manor? It's just ridiculous. Like, you just wake up just mad, or else you're waiting for the noise to happen, and you're not getting your sound sleep. It's so important.
My second question is, if it's okay?
Sure, yes.
What is the time period that this event takes place?
7:00 to 9:00 AM.
For two hours they're there?
No, it could be anywhere from 7:00 to 9:00.
Right. How long are they there? How long are they there, though, typically?
Five minutes.
Five minutes?
Of clang and smash and banging.
Okay.
And he's, has he's been quiet the last week? I don't know why. Maybe he heard about me coming or something. I just don't know why, but it's been quiet. But then you sit and wait for it.
So five minutes within 7:00 to 9:00 AM?
Yes, and it's loud. It'll wake you up, crashing, banging. It's just ridiculous how you wake up in a state of shock, and then your whole day is ruined, because you've lost your sleep, and now it just goes on from there. You're just not happy with your day.
Okay. Thank you.
Councillor Berg.
Hi. Miss Everett, Wendy. So you just mentioned that you're not a resident of Prairie Sunrise Towers.
Walk away.
Okay, so have you tried talking to the building manager there? Any luck?
Nope. Cassidy, nope.
Okay, because...
She was supposed to call me back last week, and she didn't. I'm sorry. Hi.
Slide the whole thing right closer to you.
No, I tried Cassidy last week. I really, really think I've done my research. I've asked, this has been 10 years, and I thought the only way I'm really going to...
Yeah, so I understand your high-level ask, but again, on a micro level, again, I don't think that dumpster particularly is an Aquaterra dumpster. To me, it's...
No, it's a Prairie disposal.
Prairie Sunrise Towers, Prairie disposal, private contract between them. So I don't know what's...
You have to change the 7:00 to 9:00, hopefully. I'm just asking for a postponement.
Yeah.
Three hours, three hours, and I bet you 500 people will say, holy, where'd that noise go? Why am I not getting woken up Monday, Wednesday, Friday? It's...
Yeah, it would be nice if you could actually have Prairie Sunrise request a different pickup time, but it doesn't seem to be that simple.
It's not working.
Okay.
No. And that's why I thought if there is, is it the bylaw here that says 7:00 to 9:00, or is it a...
Again, I may be speaking out of turn, but we can ask our administration later, but when it's time to ask them questions.
Thank you.
But this is for asking questions to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Councillor Berg, anything else?
I have one more, and then I have a question for you myself, councillor O'Toole.
Hi, Kevin.
Thank you.
O'Toole?
Question for you is, does the train interrupt your sleep at all?
We're used to trains. You know how trains are like peaceful and the clanging and the banging?
I don't know if everybody agrees with you, but I'm happy for you to tell the world that trains are peaceful.
Yeah, they are, I think. My father was a train, he worked for CP Rail, maybe that's why, it's in my blood, but no, I knew that was going to come up, but it's just not. I don't know what it is. It's like subliminal, I don't know what that noise with the bang, it's like sort of, you're asleep, you're relaxed, but when they just start with those, the metal, and crashing and banging and banging and crashing, they could do it easier, they could do it like nicely, but they're not. They're not, they're just having a little heyday, waking everybody up happily every Monday, Wednesday, Friday. It's just ridiculous.
Are you on the east side?
I'm on the back. It's the back of Prairie Sunrise is where their dumpsters are, so I'm at Brody, like one block, right there, and it's all of us are affected.
Okay.
We're all up and at it, like, just like, are you kidding?
No, I was just trying to ask some information, so...
Of course, anything else, sir?
No, I'm good, thank you. Sorry you're getting not very much good sleep.
No, and then it's going to affect me. It's affected me with ADHD, it's affected my obesity, like, if it affects you doing your housework, because you don't, you're tired, you don't want to. It attacks, it's attacking me, like, being miserable half the day because you didn't get your sleep, you're cranky, you're, it just goes on and on. I tried, you know, you try, but it's not good for our health. And there's the, there's the results right there. If you don't get seven to nine hours, you're gonna, our health, people are going to be more people in your hospitals, that we don't have the doctors to do what we have now. So if you bring in more, and then the nurses aren't going into nursing, it's like, it's scary.
And Ms. Everett, I have a question for you, and then I'm going to, as I mentioned, the delegation portion of our meetings happens at the end, where council has an opportunity to ask administration questions and potentially direct administration to get more information, so you're more than welcome to stick around for that. If not, it's easy to find out how the discussion went. My question for you, you mentioned that Prairie Disposal or the garbage removal company comes three times a week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Do you happen to know, in that area, the other multifamily residential facilities that are around you, are they...
There isn't really, they just got the care center there.
Yeah.
And then you also have the church.
But are they picked up individually by Aquaterra, or do they have dumpsters as well? Do you happen to know?
I don't know that.
Okay, all right. Some of the rest of my questions will be for administration, so thank you.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate you really providing us a lot of information.
Yes.
A lot for conversation.
It's heartfelt.
And please, stick around if you'd like, or if not, someone will follow up with you after council has their conversation.
Thank you very much, everybody for having me.
Thank you for coming.
I appreciate it.
Moving on, there was no other delegations for today's meeting, so we're moving on to the next item, and as I go through that, because my e-scribe is kicking out, we're going to go to item number seven, under report 7.1, the city council cost-sharing agreement, the mediation protocols. And so Mr. Tarrant will get set up, has a conversation, and as council recalls, we have our intermunicipal cost-sharing agreement with the county of Grand Prairie, and part of that is up for, or not part of it, we're currently visiting the next iteration of it. So there's been some protocols identified. Mr. Tarrant, if you wanted to introduce that, thanks.
Thank you, and through the mayor, so two years ago, council passed, signed with the county, the cost-sharing agreement, and with the expectation that within a couple of years that there would be renegotiation of the agreement that would be for a longer-term period. The collaboration committees between the city and county have been, have met, and have developed these joint protocols that would guide the mediation, and it just spells out what the protocols and procedures are that both sides agree to follow throughout the mediation. mediation. And presented for you here today, for your information, the county did, county council did pass theirs this morning, and they're presented for you here today to discuss.
All right. So, council, you've had an opportunity to read it. As Mr. Tarrant mentioned, county council did approve these this morning, so now we're just looking for other questions, concerns on the protocols as in your package, or business that may be arising. Counselor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm really looking forward to the negotiations that will be dealt with through this mediation process. And so, if there's no other questions, I would move that council endorse the 2024 Recreation and Cultural Cost Sharing Committee mediation protocols.
Perfect. So, thank you for that motion. That motion is in order. Open it up for discussion or debate on the motion. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll just give another pause. No one in the queue, I'll call the question. Please vote.
Counselor Thiessen in favor?
Mayor Clayton in favor? Counselor Plot?
Counselor Plot in favor?
And that carries unanimously. Thank you for that, Mr. Tarrant. Next on the agenda, under, we'll move on to committee business, and item 8.1, Council Committee of the Whole from March 13th. And I'll look to Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council adopt the minutes, the Council Committee of the Whole meeting held March 13th as presented.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question.
Counselor Thiessen in favor?
Please vote. Mayor Clayton in favor? Counselor Blackmore, how do you vote?
Counselor Blackmore is in favor. I think my eScribe's stuck in a loop.
Yeah. So, let's, okay, so that carries unanimously. I can just ask for a pause. There seems to be some eScribe issues. I know many people around the table are having them. So, if we can just have a pause to see if council is able to rectify the eScribe IT issue. Yeah. Me too. Yeah, so, can we take a recess? Can we have, can we make a motion to take a five-minute recess to try to...
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council have a five-minute recess.
So, I'll call the question on the five-minute recess. Please vote.
Thiessen in favor?
Counselor Blackmore's in favor.
Mayor Clayton in favor?
Bressi in favor?
Plot in favor?
Berg in favor?
Bosch in favor?
Perfect. That carries unanimously. Now, I'll ask council to reboot their iPads or the devices that they're using eScribe on. Okay. All right. Five, four, three, two, one. Welcome back to the City Council meeting of March 25th. Thank you for your patience while we had an IT update that we needed to do. We are on item 8.2, Public and Protective Services Committee meeting, held March 13th. And I will turn that one over to Counselor O'Connor as the chair.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move that council adopt the minutes of the Public and Protective Services meeting, held March 13th, as presented.
Great. That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Counselor O'Connor, you had one item of business for today.
Yes. Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to turn this over to Chief Lemieux to introduce the topic, please.
Chief Lemieux?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, in front of you is a request for emergency community funding, and the recommendations that committee recommend council approve, funding an amount of $16,000 to the Karen Housing Society. The society was actually asking for $30,000. $16,000 to cover their operational shortfall, 16,000, sorry, 6,000 for computers and 8,000 for food security. So, administration is recommending only the $16,000. And they're funding to come from the future expenditures reserve should council agree with the motion. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks for your introduction. I'll turn it over, or open the queue for comments or questions for administration. Counselor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm curious, Chief Lemieux, I can understand why we are chose not to fund computers, but I'm wondering about why we cho, why the recommendation is not to fund the food security portion of their ask.
Chief Lemieux?
I'm going to look to Stephanie to see if she could help with answering that question since she's dealt with this file.
Ms. Casale, if you want to come on forward. Thank you.
Thank you, through the mayor. The recommendation for the 16,000 was to allow coverage for the operational shortfall, which was identified as just over 15,000 for the year.
And the food security, we expect that they'll pick that up through the community in some way, or?
Through the chair? Yeah, thank you. Yes, there are other agencies that can hopefully assist with, with that aspect of the program that they provide.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Thiessen, maybe you can wait. Thanks. Counselor Thiessen.
Sorry, Mayor Clayton. I thought you were asking if maybe I could wait.
No.
Thank you. Thank you for this. Thanks for coming up, Ms. Casale, and Chief Lemieux for introducing this. So, this is going to cover their operational shortfall. What, I'm kind of, I think I know what Counselor Blackmore's lapping down. I think I'm kind of in agreement, but what reassurances do we have that we're not going to see another operational shortfall? Let's say if the Karen maybe doesn't get food from another third-party provider, and they have to foot that bill themselves. Is there, is there any reassurance that they might not come back for another 8,000 in the future to help the residents or pay the bills?
Ms. Casale?
Thank you, through the chair. Their annual operating period begins in April, so the recommended funding amount will see them through to the end of March.
Thank you.
Counselor Bosch?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. This is based around the food security portion. What is the cost? I just didn't see it right now, but can you remind me what the cost request was for that portion of it?
Ms. Casale?
Through the chair, I don't have the report in front of me, but I am inclined to say it was $6,000. Was 6,000 or 8,000? 8,000.
Okay. Because I have seen them publicly ask on social media and just privately to people for assistance. So, I do know that they have been working to try and solve their own problems, but it's tough times right now, so, thank you.
Thanks for that, Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. So, just for point of clarity before asking any questions, they are a nonprofit?
Thank you, through the chair. Yes, they are, they are a nonprofit organization.
And this is a one-time ask? So, going forward, again, if they're running, say, $15,000 short, they've corrected that in an ongoing basis so that it's not an annual ask?
Thank you, through the chair. Emergency community group funding is anticipated to be recommended only to meet, you know, the inability for organizations to meet payroll demands, monthly bills, utilities, that sort of thing, or some type of extreme facility operational need, like a, you know, failure for a roof or something like that. It is my understanding that based on conversation with the applicant, that they have lost a funding source for this year that has caused them to be predicting and forecasting a negative variance for their year-end. So, it isn't anticipated that this will be problematic going forward.
Okay. And then you just answered my third question, so thank you.
I have a question for you. So, explain to me, remind me of, of how the RFP for support works. There's a successful proponent, I don't know if that's been announced yet, and then can that successful proponent support other organizations? Or is it, if there was an annual, the annual RFP for funding that other organizations can apply for, that's done on an annual basis, there's one proponent, and it's intended to only serve that organization? Or do we expect that, you know, a Canadian mental health, or a center point, or an elders' caring society supports other organizations when there's a successful proponent?
Through the chair, Chief Lemieux?
Yes, so, there is a process through our FCSS program for funding, and that's done through an RFP, so that may be the one you're referring to. But there's also funding through OSSI that's handed through the CAB. So, and this particular agency was not identified as one of the recipients through CAB for this period.
And so, emergency funding, as mentioned, is one-time funding, traditionally for payrolls or bills in order to be paid so that the facility organization continue to operate. They're just sort of summarizing, so everybody's on the same page. They ask for money outside of that for computers and food scarcity concerns. Administration's recommending that we stick to the true intent of the emergency funding, which is identified in the motion as being 16,000 of the total ask, correct?
Through the mayor, that is correct. It's anticipated that the recommendation will support their payroll demands for programming staff as well as their operational shortfall.
Okay, perfect. Just everybody's on the same page. I'm going to go to Counselor O'Connor first so that we have a motion on the floor, then we can just continue to discuss or debate.
You'll make it.
Yeah? Yeah. Sorry, there's a recommendation. So, as the chair of the committee, would you like to make a motion, and then we have this opportunity for discussion and debate?
Thank you. I would like to make the, do business, thank you. I'd like to move council approve emergency community group funding in the amount of 16,000 to the Karen Housing Society from the future expenditures reserves.
Okay.
Open for any questions. Looks like we got the horse cart before the horse there.
Nope, that was a question, not, time for question for administration. So, now there's a motion on the floor, discussion or debate for, on the motion. Counselor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would ask that council support this motion, particularly because it does focus on operational funding. We know from the delegation that came to the standing committee meetings that they have the shortfall because a corporate funder is simply unable to meet their obligation and has left the organization in a bit of a bind. I support that we don't support, add any additional funding for food security or for computers. I know their food security is they run a small food bank out of the building for the tenants, and there are other options available in the community. However, in addition to my request for council to support this motion, I would actually ask the community to support the food security issues at Karen by providing donations of food if you're available, or if you can do that. So, yes, please support the motion. I think that this is a worthy organization that fills a need that is otherwise going to leave a gap in the community.
Thanks for your comments. I will recognize Counselor Bosch in one second. I'm just going to jump in. I, too, will support the motion, and I do have some business following that I think will be valuable. Counselor Bosch?
Thank you. I want to support the motion for the 16,000, but I would like to see an amendment for the additional eight. And the reason I say that resulting in 24,000, let's make that clear, is this is one-time funding, and you know, we did it for Salvation Army in tens and tens of thousands of dollars for the very same reason at this point in time. People are struggling maybe more than they did, you know, years ago, right? Our numbers for insecure food, food security is just rising as it is nationally and in North America. So, I don't think this 8,000 is going to go to something wasteful. On the contrary, I think that this will help them out at the point in time. The issue is at hand now, no different than when the Salvation Army came to us, and I don't think that, I can't pick one over the other. So, I would ask the chair if he would amend it, take a friendly amendment to 24,000.
So, I, as a chair, actually prefer that those are two separate motions. I think that emergency funding is pretty clear in regards to what it fills. If you, if you want to have a subsequent motion identifying a funding source for the foods portion indicated, I think I'd prefer it that way. So, so I'll come back to you.
Sure.
And so, now, discussion and debate on the motion as is. Recognizing no one else in the queue, I'll call the question on the motion as is in your eScribe. Thank you. Sorry, you're not in the queue, Counselor Thiessen. Did you want me to call back the vote? You're kidding? Okay. So, that has carried unanimously. Now, I'll recognize Counselor Bosch for additional business.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I move that council approve emergency food security costs requested by the Karen Housing Society for, through... costs requested by the Cairn Housing Society for, through the Council's strategic funding.
So can I help you a little bit? I would suggest that you just, it's the emergency community group funding that is the part that shouldn't be in the motion, in my opinion, because as identified, emergency group funding is traditionally for payroll, utility bills, et cetera. So I would suggest that your motion be Council-approved in the funding, in the amount of, to the Cairn Housing Society from a funding source for food, identified food scarcity.
Okay. I should have said emergency food scarcity at the moment, but, so, how's that look?
So you're, yeah. So, as mentioned, in your eScribe reads, "Council approve funding in the amount of 8,000 to the Cairn Housing Society from Council's..."
Strategic-
No. Well, is that your motion? Because the original motion was from Future Expenditures Reserve. Are you wanting this?
From the Council's Strategic Initiatives Fund for Food Scarcity.
Okay. So discussion or debate on that motion. Recognizing Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. One of the things that I'm wrestling with this is it's one specific building, and I would, I'm in favor of, again, feeding people that don't have access to food, but I also know that this is about four blocks away from the Salvation Army. And so what my fear is, is that we're feeding one particular building in a city that has many, many buildings that may have issues. So, bottom line, I guess, that's just one of the things that I'm wrestling with. Do we fund one building over others in this particular instance?
And so I have a question for administration, which is a little bit out of order, but I'll allow myself. So, Chief Lemieux, can you tell me currently, how do organizations or individuals in our community find where food opportunities are? I mean, people are familiar with the Salvation Army Food Bank. I understand the Cairn Place is doing a bit of a food bank. I know the Friendship Center does collection. Is there a central point or communication line for people if they're wanting to know how they can get support in food shortages that they may be facing?
Yeah, and I would say that the best resource is the Salvation Army or the Friendship Center. They work together on that issue, but also Community Social Development can also direct people to the resources that they need, because there is a food security committee in this municipality.
Right. And so I also understand there's a group of restaurants that have a bit of an initiative. So that was going to be my business rising. I think it would be valuable if the city shared that information somewhere on our website of, you know, if you are facing food shortage challenges in your family or as an individual, these are where we recommend you go. Maybe that's already there, and I apologize if it is. But that, I think that's an important piece for our community.
And I'm not sure if it's that clear on our website, but we'll make sure that the information gets out there.
Thank you. So other discussion or debate on the motion. Counselor Thiessen?
Yeah, I like Counselor Bosch's motion, but I'm a bit torn, too, because I can see the use and the functionality of the computers as something that perhaps we can help them out with. I do know that, at the same time, the Cairns Social Society itself and the people that live in there, some people are just low-income people, some people are people with disabilities, some people are elderly and living on a very small, small income that they get on a monthly basis. And I look at it kind of as, the computers are a bit harder to get out of the community. That's called cold, hard cash and stuff like that. There's lots of service organizations that can do that. Whereas the food, if you say, hey, there's a need here, there's lots of people that will come out and meet that need. At the same time, I know, I know some residents that actually do use the food hampers there that are available at the Cairn. And like Counselor Berg said, there are other places, too, that also have these same issues. And I do like where the mayor's going. At the same time, my bleeding heart wants me to ensure that everybody has a full belly before they go to bed. I'm fairly certain I'm going to vote in support of this motion, but I question at the same time if there's maybe something that we could do that the community wouldn't do. And so that's kind of what I'm wagering. If we could help out with the computers and softwares and help them be able to run their business or to have the people there, then I'm game with that. I'm also game to give them food. But it's a catch-22 right now, so I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm interested to hear where other people stand on this debate. But for now, I'm going to rest on the side of supporting this motion. Thank you.
Recognizing Counselor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I will, I will not be supporting this motion for two reasons. One is I'm not crazy about the funding source. I don't think it's the appropriate funding source. And secondly, like Counselor Berg, there are many buildings in this community where there are people accessing food security through the food bank or the Friendship Center or a variety of other sources, including the library. I feel that it's a little bit like trying to put our little finger in the dyke. And if I were to support food security issues, I think I would want to go to one of the main suppliers of the service rather than the secondary suppliers. So I feel that we have better ways to meet the needs of food security in the building, and I would look for opportunities to find those other ways rather than simply funding from a source that I don't think is appropriate.
I have another question for, thanks, Counselor Blackmore, and another question for Chief Lemieux. I'm familiar with the Food Scarcity Committee, and I apologize, that's probably not the accurate term. Do you have information on them, is my first question to you? And second of all, remind me, Council about a year ago funded the Salvation Army Food Bank for 200, almost $300,000 in a shortfall that they were facing in their fundraising campaign that year. Since then, if I recall correctly, they overshot and overexceeded their fundraising targets. And so this Food Scarcity Committee works with various organizations. The Salvation Army Food Bank is on a good path of fundraising what they need. Is really this community being serviced properly when I hear of all these different organizations that have great initiatives, but there's still an organization such as the Cairn who has residents who are facing significant food shortages?
So what I will say is, I'm not familiar with the details of the Food Security Committee, but I think, I believe they do a lot of good work. And you're absolutely correct with regards to the Salvation Army. They did come to Council when they had the shortfall, but I believe they're doing quite well now, and they did significantly, or they did exceed their goal at Christmas time. So, and we haven't heard of any further issues from the, out of the food bank or the Grand Prairie Friendship Center. And again, they work together.
Okay. So for now, I see no one else in the queue. As soon as I say that, someone always jumps in. So I will call the question on the motion. Sorry, Counselor Bosch to close. My apologies.
Thank you. I guess, you know, for me, this isn't about if we're going to start picking and choosing organizations. This is an organization right now who, at the moment, is struggling, particularly because they have lost some grant funding. I believe that this organization runs well and was just dealt a hand that is out of their control in regards to regular funding that they receive. I don't think this is something that is wasteful or of no use to people. I think $8,000 couldn't be spent better, you know, making sure people have food. If I didn't see this organization on social media and through the public advocating for their food security program, that would be one thing. But I have seen them asking and asking and asking. So for me, I hope you support this, this funding for this organization.
All right. Thanks for your close, Counselor Bosch. I will call the question. Please vote, Council.
Bressi in favor?
Counselor Plon in favor?
And that is carried five to four. I do have some, oh, go ahead, Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. It looks like you're going to move on. I've got other-
No, I have some business-
I'm jumping the gun on you, then I'll-
That's okay. I'm hoping that somebody, and maybe can you be, can be you, Counselor Bressi, because you wanted to be in the queue as well. I'd like to see more information on this Food Security Committee. I think that if Council wants to fund food organizations that are going to provide food shortages in our community, that it should be through a central funding model. I personally would have preferred Council supporting something such as the Food Security Committee rather than a, than an individual organization. So I'm hoping somebody can make a motion for me to direct administration to bring back information from the Food Security Committee as well as other food security initiatives that exist in the City of Grand Prairie. And my expectation with that report, if somebody's willing to make the motion, would be that it provides information on what's out there, you know, who's doing well, maybe who needs some more support. And then as a, as a whole, Council can look at food shortages in our, in our community. Thanks. So I'll go to you, Counselor Bressi.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm happy to, I'm happy to make that motion. My concern, though, is that we've got a siding now saying that they've got urgent need. I also noticed this weekend that the Friendship Center has announced that due to funding, they can't do meals over the weekends anymore. And for me, my worry about making this motion is how long it's going to take if there's an immediate need right now.
So I guess that's a question for Chief Lemieux. Like, I agree.
That's what I want to ask. So how long would-
If the Friendship Center is going to be at Council in two weeks, and someone else is going to be at Council two weeks, I, my concern is that we have a bigger issue than maybe we're dealing with, with one organization. So how, how long will it take? Would it take to gather that information, Chief Lemieux?
I think we can make this a priority. It might not be next week, but probably at the following Standing Committee meeting.
Okay. So are you willing to make that motion?
I'm happy to make a motion. I don't see it in eScribe yet. Does the, should I attempt to make another motion?
It's in there.
Or is it going to be captured?
It's in there, no.
Oh, it's just not being refreshed. Oh, there it is.
Perfect.
Yeah, I am happy to stand by that motion.
Okay. Discussion or debate on that motion. Counselor O'Connor?
Yes, Mayor Clayton. I had thought that the last time that the Friendship Center had come to us through the Salvation Army, that the province had given them an extra funding.
One time.
One time. Oh, it was only a one time. Well, I'll eat my words and I'll-
Not a problem. Recognizing Counselor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor. I will support this motion, of course, clearly, because I made the last one. Now that we've dealt with the issue at hand, that is, you know, for the one organization, it is a red flag showing that there is other organizations that are working really hard out there for the people in our community. And so getting a overall view and maybe a central funding pocket, perhaps, or, or answers on how, how we can help, I think this is a good motion to move forward.
Counselor Thiessen?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I will definitely be supporting this motion. I think we're probably going to see a lot of this, and especially three weeks' time from now, we're going to likely see an increase to the cost of everything when the carbon tax comes forward. And then more not-for-profits are going to be at, I guess, more of in a pinch situation. I also wonder, too, if, as part of that report, perhaps, the City of Grand Prairie has gone out of our way over the last decade to try to promote sustainability through edible landscaping. We have about 16 orchards scattered around town. We have community gardens, learning gardens. I know that our city staff sometimes harvest those, well, most times, we harvest those, those learning gardens and we donate it to the, to the food bank there. But perhaps there's an opportunity inside of food security where we might be able to have residents working and then, at the same time, take a load off of our city administration and teach people how to be sustainable in their own rights through the various plantings that we've already done around the city. Considering that we've already made that policy decision to have edible landscaping in the community, I think that very much should be part of our Food Security Committee. And I hope there might be something in that report that could maybe give us some ideas to direct some kind of new program or a way that we can utilize our edible landscaping to the benefit of the people who need it most. So I will support this. I look forward to the report coming, and I'll pray that we don't see a lot more not-for-profit groups under food insecurity issues coming to Council for funding.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. I'll just say that I think that this is a great initiative for Council to streamline, because as in our community, we recognize more and more needs in food security concerns. And in the last motion, it wasn't that I don't support the initiative that Cairn and the work that Cairn is doing. It's because I think that there is, needs to be a streamlined system. And at the end of the day, potentially, an organization could get more money than they currently ask for based on assessing their needs, based on some organizations being very successful in fundraising and some not. So making sure that the systems are as efficient as possible is a priority, in my opinion. And I look forward to seeing how we can support that distribution of food in regards to needs in our community. Counselor Bressi, did you have anything to close?
Yeah, thank you. It sounds like there's support on this, which I appreciate. I'm looking forward to hearing this. And just for administration, I know for me, the number one thing I want to know about is, are there people that are hungry being turned away right now, given current things that are going on? I don't think there are yet, talking to a few of the providers, but if there are, I sure want to hear about that.
Call the question? And that carries unanimously. Counselor O'Connor, any highlights from your meeting?
Yes, and I would like to send compliments off to Public and Protective Services Chief Lemieux. They've got more condensed version of the highlights. So the Grand Prairie RCMP will be conducting its annual performance planning session next week. The session will include a review of community feedback collected during the Fall Town Hall series and provide an overview of the 2023 crime reports and trends. And the RCMP will be presenting and inviting feedback on proposed priorities for 2024. Fire Chief Freeman Bosson, retired effective March 19, 2024. After 40 years working for the city and fire department, we thank Chief Bosson for his service to the city and with the best in his retirement. And that deserves a round of applause. The Women of Influence Awards was held on March 8, 2024, marked the largest event to date with 290 attendees. And the organizing committee proudly extends their congratulations to the award recipients presented by Peace Diagnostic Imaging. And lastly, a virtual session will be held on April 3 from 4 to 5 to provide support for community group enhancement funding applications. And the session aims to address general questions related to the application, required paperwork, supporting documents in the funding process. Interested applicants can register for this session by emailing grants@cityofgp.com. And that is the conclusion of my report.
Thanks for that, Counselor O'Connor. Moving on to Item A Point 3, the InvestGP Committee Meeting held March 13. And I'll turn this over to Counselor Blackmore for introduction.
I'd move that Council adopt the amendments to Policy 356 as presented.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. You had Item A Business, Counselor Blackmore?
Yes, I do. I would ask that Council approve amendments to Policy 356 as presented. This is an increase to the barrier-free grant process that is available through InvestGP, increasing that limit from 10,000 to 20,000. And I would ask Chief McCackern if she wanted to add anything to that.
Chief McCackern?
Thank you, Mayor, and through the chair. I don't believe I have anything additional to add other than this is, as Counselor Blackmore mentioned, this is an increase from a maximum of 10,000 to 20,000. And we have just recently, sorry, and that will continue on throughout this year until the program is fully maximized.
Perfect. Thank you for that. So the motion's in order. I'll open it up for discussion or debate. Sorry, Counselor Blackmore, did you make the motion? Thank you. I missed that for a moment. Counselor Plon?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I think maybe Chief McCackern mentioned it, but I was just trying to figure out when this expires. It would expire when the money's out. We don't have an end date on it currently. So I'm happy to support the motion. It is, I will be- As I will be making amendment that I do think we need to put an end date. I don't like that we just leave these open forever. This one's been open for three years already. And I do think that it signals to our community, at some point, if you're going to take advantage of this grant, take advantage of it. It just can't stay open forever. Happy to support the motion, though. I debated against it at the budget or at committee. Happy to support it today, though, but yeah, we'll be looking to make an amendment.
All right. Looking to make an amendment now?
I can make it now, yeah. Thank you. Turn my cellphone off. Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, I would make an amendment that this grant expires March 1, 2025. That almost gives almost another year from today. It'll be almost four years that we'll have the grant open. And I think that there's not many grants that I can think of that we just leave open forever. I think at this point, there's there's an opportunity for four potential people could apply and take up the whole grant. So I think at some point, we do have to signal to our community, these grants just can't stay open forever. I also think it signals to our administration that if that money doesn't get utilized at that point, they can start thinking about what else it's going to be useful for. Again, I just don't want to see us have a never, never program on grants. I don't think that's good for our community.
Okay. So that's an amendment to the council policy in your package, which would have an end date on this Policy 356 of March 31, 2025. Discussion or debate on the amendment? Sorry, what? Did you say March 1?
I said March 1, but March 31 is even like, I can see here from now.
Okay. Okay, so March 31. I didn't mean to amend.
Well, it's okay. One another month.
All right. So discussion or debate on the amendment. Recognizing Councilor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, I certainly support that amendment. I agree with with Councilor Plot that sometimes we need to bring things to a close, close the circle. And with the increase in funding, that does open the door for bigger, more costly, barrier-free access renovations. And so I, too, feel that, you know, if we change our mind any year, we certainly have that ability. So I'd certainly support the motion.
All right. Thanks for that. Councilor Bressi.
Thank you, Council Plot. I can't I can't support the amendment. I think for me, there's been other grant programs we've had, such as facade improvement, that it made sense to expire, because those are very visible things that, driving by, you can see, and there's visible incentive for other businesses to keep up. And I think those are things where you get the ball rolling, and hopefully, it starts rolling on its own. Often, these great upgrades for accessibility, though, they're invisible to everybody except for the people who truly need them, who are often the people who aren't aren't able to advocate for themselves, aren't able to advocate for the changes they need. For me, there's also, I know a number of businesses have got them, where there are new businesses that have come into place and realizing, holy smokes, we want to do better for our disabled patrons than the past owners of the space have been able to do. And I'd hate to say to a business in late 2025, well, sorry, should have started your business a year earlier if you want to be more more accessible. So in general, I agree grant programs should come to an end eventually. This is one where I'm okay doing a helping with a couple bathrooms, a couple ramps, a couple electric doorways, whatever they are, every year. And so this is one that's dear to my heart, and I'd hate to I'd hate to see the end. So I can't support this as is. If it was something like, hey, direct administration to bring it to council for review in a year or something like that, I 100% support that. But just the fact that it will end without any council action, I can't support that.
All right. Councilor Tool.
Yeah, thank you very much. I got to agree with this guy sitting beside me here. We never know when we become disabled, if it's ever going to happen, or how many people that you know are becoming disabled. With that, I've been sitting on the advisory board for a number of years, and I truly believe that we should keep this one open. Things change, and when they do change, they change fast. And I would like to see this as an open-ended and not cancel the program. Thank you.
Councilor Thiessen.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. This is one of those areas where I'm inclined to agree with Council Bressi as well. I don't want a hard I don't want a hard stop. I'd rather have a review of the program and see where dollars have been going, if they've been put to use. Some fixes are real easy, like we found with our own facilities. It's about handicap stalls opening outward rather than inward, so that you can get a wheelchair in and out. Those don't cost a lot of money. But when we're talking about ramps or widening doorways or stuff like that, that a small business or startup business may want, those are monies that help them offset the costs. Maybe they can employ a couple more people as well and have space inside their business or their not-for-profit for all people of different abilities to be able to walk through or roll through those doors. So I want to ensure that at least we're giving it a good review. And if there is no uptake, then we can deal with it on a case-by-case basis, reduce the fund or get rid of it altogether. This is just a hard stop for a year. And sure, it's going to encourage people to use up the pot, but then what happens once it's used up and people are a little late to the dance, let's say, in July or August? And they're like, sorry, well, that pot ends now at March 31 of 2025, but it's already been used up, so that that's gone now. To us, we'd see that as success and that people are using the grant, and maybe there's a high demand for it, and we might continue the program. Without a review, we're not going down that path. So I can't support this motion.
Councilor O'Connor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I am also in the position that I feel that this program, Barrier Free, is important for the whole community and not end it at this point. I think we may look at a review process coming in the future. I think it's important that we take care of the people that we don't see visually that may or may not be able to take care of this. So I will not support this amendment.
Council Blackmore. Sorry, I'm not avoiding you, Council Plot. I'm going to come to you to close. Councilor Blackmore.
Just a question for clarity, I guess, from council. Currently, the way this policy is written is when the 20, when the pot of money is gone, the pot of money is gone, and the grant closes automatically. So the way the policy is written right now, there is no request for a review at the end of funding. All Counselor Plot's motion does is bring an end date to the to the grant, which is in no way prevents us from reviewing the grant at the end of that end date or at the end of the of the monies available. So I'm I'm a little confused at how putting an end date on it is going to prevent us from looking at it again, adding more money in the future, or not doing any of that. I'm a little confused by that, because I don't see that that is the ultimate outcome of this motion.
Councilor Bosch.
Thank you. I don't have a problem supporting this motion or this amendment. I don't see us changing, adding funds to these type of programs. It's clear by all of council tonight and every other time that we spoke of this, that if we run out of money, whether it be $10,000 in the past or $20,000 now, we're going to revisit this. So I think Counselor Plot, if I'm correct, you're just putting a date as a as a business side of this motion versus a feeling side. I think the feelings, we all have them, and the funds will be there for people with disabilities.
Thanks for your comments. Councilor Plot to close.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Got some good conversation going on on amendments, so I appreciate it. I guess for me, I'm not saying anything against Barrier Free. We've been doing this for three years. What I am concerned about, though, is we're trying to target specific businesses around Barrier Free and only giving them grants. And that's fine, because only businesses that are going to benefit from this is if you're, to Council Bressi's point, is, hey, what if I get into a new, I want to open a new coffee shop, and I I figure out I need a Barrier Free grant? That's not our responsibility all the time to help every small business succeed. If this $80,000 expires in 60 days, we're done with it. If it got applied for, I'm just trying to put an end date. I don't want to continually have reports coming back for this. I think we've had this going on for three or four years. I think InvestGP hopefully can look at other opportunities to help other areas of the community that that this has been going on for a long time. We've doubled the amount of funding just to try to find a way to get it more utilized and try to get it used up. I don't want to see administration waste a bunch of time on this, to be honest. And if we don't put an end date, my fear is we're going to be having this debate again. We're going to have administration come back with another report. We know that that takes time and money on the organization just to be in the exact same spot we are now. So it's not a hill for me to die on. I just think as an organization, we have to not spin our circle sometimes. We've done a great job putting funding, and we should be proud of ourselves as a council to actually allocate money for Barrier Free grants. Most communities haven't done this. We've done this. We've extended it, and we've extended it, and we've extended it. At some point, those businesses that are interested in taking up this grant need to take it up. Every other grant that I've ever looked at as a business owner expires at some point. It just can't be a never, ever ending open thing. So hopefully, you can support the motion.
Thanks for your close, Council Plot. Call the question. So now, back to the amended motion, as Council Blackmore made the motion.
Sorry, I apologize. Could I ask her a revote? I don't.
Okay, that's fine.
Know what happened there.
Just do a revote on that last one. All right, call the question on the amendment. And that still carries, but now it's seven to two. So now, back to the main motion as amended, recognizing Councilor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, I will be I will be supporting this motion. I think increasing it is wise. And I think, not to really negate the last motion, but just speak to this motion. I think for me, I love this grant because it's not actually really supporting the businesses. I think the problem is, often from a business perspective, it depends on the renovations you're doing. If codes, if somebody's telling you, hey, you have to increase that bathroom or add that ramp, yeah, it definitely does help the businesses. But also, there's times where a business wants to make improvements to make make them more accessible. There's not really enough people that they're going to draw to their business all of a sudden to really make that make sense from a dollars and cents perspective. And I I'm open to ways to amend this program so that it delivers this more. But for me, I really want this granted. I really see it being useful in those in those places where a business wants to do the right thing, but it just doesn't make sense to them from a dollars and cents figure to tip it and help it make sense for dollars and cents figure. So I don't love this grant because it's helping businesses. I like this grant because it's helping people with disabilities who might not be a big enough patronage to otherwise get served.
Councilor Berg.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Just a couple of questions, just to get some numbers out in public. So I'm in favor of increasing it to 20,000, but we are not increasing the overall pool of available funds. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the next one, how much remains actively in that pool?
Chief McCackern, do you have that number handy?
My apologies, Mayor. I'm just trying to get the numbers here. Like she's getting the numbers and then. I'm going to have to get that number. I don't see it in our report.
If I could help, Chief McCackern. The total amount allocated is $126,580. The total amount given is $118,248. So there's not a lot of money left in that pot.
And if I may add to that, we have just recapitalized it for $80,000.
So $80,000 totals available, up to $20,000. So if everybody asked for 20, you'd get four new.
Yep, just wanted that out of the public. Thank you.
All right. So I see no one else with comments or questions on the amended motion, therefore, I'm going to call the question. And that carries unanimously. Now, some highlights from your meetings, Councilor Blackmore.
So we are still adding additional numbers to the recent renewal stream. So those recent statistics include 101 candidate endorsement letters issued, 16 employer applications received in the last two weeks, and 414 positions available to qualified employers. Administration attended the launch of launch celebration of Northwest Polytechnic Center for Community Enhancement and Social Innovation from February 19 till March 10. Three new home businesses and 10 new commercial businesses were issued licenses. Under investment attraction, administration is attending the AgriTech and Future Foods Conference as part of Team Alberta with other municipalities and Invest Alberta. And this week, the mayor, which is actually last week, the mayor and chief of staff were at CERA in Houston promoting energy and petrochemicals, along with, again, representatives from the province, meeting with investors, government officials, and agencies to advance local and regional opportunities. In advance and entertainment, Live Nation and the Bonnet's Energy Center are bringing Tenille Towns home for her first arena show on November 19. And tickets will be on sale to the general public March 22, so those sales have began. Stormer in the Storm actually finished their playoff rounds last night, when they did not advance to the next round of the AGHL playoffs. But we congratulate them on playing really well. We thank everybody who attended in record numbers to those games. And the additional thing that's happening at the Northwest Polytechnic Cardinal Theater on March 29, Letter Kennedy Presents will be there, and the East Indian Cultural Association will be holding the annual Visaki Celebration at the Bose on April 20. And that concludes my report, Mayor Clayton.
Thanks for that, Councilor Blackmore. Moving on to Item 8.4, the Financial Administration Services Committee Meeting held on March 13. And, or rather, March 19. I will turn that over to Counselor Plot for introduction.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I would just make a motion that council adopt the minutes of the Financial Administrative Services Committee held March 13 as presented.
It's the 19th, though.
Oh, it says, sorry. My eyesight says 13. 19th is what it actually says.
Exactly. All right. So that motion is in order. Counselor Bosch, did you have on the, okay. So call the question on that motion. All right. That carries unanimously. Before we move on to the next item, Counselor Plot, I'll recognize Counselor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I will recuse myself for the next order of business.
All right. So Counselor Bosch is identifying identifying a conflict of interest, will remove herself from the chambers for the discussion. When she's out, I'll turn it over to Counselor Plot for introduction.
Okay, so thanks, Mayor Clayton. So we have a business improvement bylaw, so I'll just get make an emotion on it, and we can get the conversation going from there, I guess. But I'll make a motion that council give first reading to bylaw C-1471, being the 2024 Business Improvement Area Tax Bylaw.
Okay, so that.
Sorry, I know that, Mayor Clayton, we didn't want we didn't want any introductions from admin or anything on that, or?
Yes.
We do? Okay. Sorry, my bad.
Nope, that's all right. We will do an introduction from Ms. Whiteway.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. So as indicated, we are asking that bylaw C-1471 be approved today and given three readings in order to impose a tax on the businesses in the city of Grand Prairie's downtown Business Improvement Area. And this is to provide the necessary funding required, and the budget has already been approved by council for 2024. And it requires no increase from the prior year.
Okay. Thanks for the introduction. Now, Counselor Plot.
So, so, yeah, thanks for that, Chief Whiteway. So, yeah, I'll make a motion that council give first reading to bylaw C-1471, being the 2024 Business Improvement Area Tax Bylaw.
All right. No discussion or debate in first reading, so call the question.
Bressi in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Counselor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'd make a motion that council give second reading to bylaw C-1471. And just to speak to a little bit, this is an annual thing that comes to us every year. I appreciate administration putting it together. I think they've streamlined this process even more from previous years, so hopefully you can support.
All right. So the motion is in order. Opportunity for questions for administration, discussion or debate. Seeing no one, I'll call the question. Seeing no one, I'll call the question.
Counselor Plot in favor.
Counselor Thiessen in favor. And Bressi.
That carries unanimously. Counselor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'd make a motion that council have third reading to bylaw C-1471 at this meeting.
Opportunity for discussion or debate. Seeing no one, I'll call the question. This must pass unanimously in order for us to have third reading here tonight. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Thanks, everybody, for letting us have third reading tonight. So council give, my motion be to council give third reading to bylaw C-1471, being the 2024 Business Improvement Area Tax Bylaw.
That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Thank you for that business. We'll give Counselor Bosch a moment to come back. No, that's okay. We'll start without her. Counselor Plot, any highlights from your meeting?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Other than the business arising, we did have some service area updates with taxation and assessment. The tax sale schedule for last week was canceled as all the properties made arrangements to take care of their outstanding taxes, which is pretty common, but nice to see that everybody got their, their items cleared up. In finance, administrations continue to work on year-end processing and reporting. Procurement have 1232 competitive bids facilitated for 2024. There are six currently on the market. Under GIS and ITS, administration is supporting the municipal census and we're involved in creating a story map for the Alberta Winter Games Committee. Network deployment of this and video surveillance installations continues at the community care campus, and that's my report, Mayor Clayton.
Thanks for that, Counselor Plot. Moving on to item 8.5, the Operational Services Committee meeting held March 19th. A look to Counselor Blackmore for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Operational Services Committee meeting held March 19th as presented.
All right, so that motion is in order. I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Any highlights from your meeting, Counselor Blackmore?
Yes, there are a few things which I cannot see. So the following tenders have closed in engineering, a tender for Lakeland culvert replacement and the tender for the 2024 Sidewalk Rehabilitation Phase One Program. In facilities and energy, seasonal preparations are underway to prepare the Aqua Terra Outdoor Pool for the summer opening. Seasonal buildings are getting ready for spring startups. And in transit, comparing the first two months of 2023 to 2024 for ridership, adult ridership is up 54% and youth ridership is up 132%, and accessible transit is up 29%. So certainly giving our young riders a break on their ticket cost to ride transit has made a definite improvement there. And in transportation, administration is working to open stormlines, culverts, et cetera. Street sweepers are being de-winterized and proactive ice controls are occurring in areas that are prone to flooding. So if people in the community see our crews out working around catchment areas that are prone to flooding, and they may think it's earlier than usual, they would be correct. It is earlier than usual, but it's always good to get a head start on these areas that can be difficult to maintain over the course of the spring. That is everything I have.
Thanks for that, Counselor Blackmore. Moving on in the agenda, we have no items of correspondence for tonight. Moving on to item number 10, delegation business. We had one delegation who was here today. I will look for council an opportunity for questions for administration or any business that may be arising. Recognizing Counselor Plot.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm not sure if this is for CAO, Hedge Services, but I'm just curious, is there, my gut feeling is that we can't really do much about this situation and that it's a private property and it's a contract between a private property and, and a contractor. Can I just get clarification on that? Is there anything that council could even do to be involved with this scenario?
Sure, so I'm going to turn that to Chief Lemieux in regards to enforcement. So Chief Lemieux.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So we, the speaker did refer to bylaw C-1103, which is the Noise, Nuisance and Public Disturbances bylaw. And very clearly that bylaw does state that we have quiet hours. The quiet hours are defined as between the hours of 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM on any day. So if there's excessive noise outside of that, those timelines, certainly our enforcement services can take action, but those are the quiet hours that have been defined in the bylaw.
Okay, thanks for that, Chief Lemieux. I guess hearing that, I feel for the opponent, I'm not a great sleeper myself, so would hate to be woken up, but I worry about changing a bylaw that would blanket the entire city and what that could have as unintended consequences for a lot of businesses that are trying to get their garbage removals dealt with. And if we, if we close that window of time, I'm not sure how that will work. So thanks for the, thanks for the update. Appreciate it for the answer.
Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. And very similar, I sympathize with Ms. Everett, try to get some sleep, but I think if we went ahead with a bylaw like she's suggesting, people couldn't mow their lawns, you know, or say at eight, nine o'clock in the morning, it would also slow down a lot of industry, home builders, a lot of different things. So I think our hands are tied there. And we can't necessarily legislate being a good neighbor, but it would be terrific if there was some measure of sympathy shown by the apartment building to say, hey, can you guys pick up some stuff in an industrial park and work your way around here at 10? To me, it seems like a simple request, a good neighbor request, but again, we can't legislate that. So I just kind of wanted to throw that out.
Counselor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Chief Lemieux, I'm curious, and I don't know if you would have answers to this, have we received any other complaints from other residents in Sunrise Towers or Brody Manor or any of those, you know, GP Care Center in that near, have we received any other complaints about noise caused by Prairie disposal?
I'm not aware of any, but I will double check, but I'm not aware of any.
And that would be through bylaw, correct? Not through 311?
Chief Lemieux.
Certainly those types of complaints would be directed to bylaw. They might come through 311, but will be redirected to enforcement services.
Okay, thank you. I am of the same mind as Counselor Plot. This is a situation that is between a private landowner and a private delivery service, and they need to work it out. I'm not prepared to change the noise bylaw now. I feel that if there was a major issue there, or if they were coming before 7:00 on any kind of regular basis, we'd have heard about it through the residents at Prairie Sunrise Towers.
Recognizing Counselor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm just kind of, I'm kind of curious, this did cause me to go and actually read our Noise and Nuisance bylaw for the first time in a while, and the way I read the bylaw, it doesn't actually apply to garbage removal. And at least the way I read it, theoretically, you could pick up garbage at 5:00 AM. I'm wondering if administrations, when they heard about this delegation, has done any reading of that bylaw and if there's, if there's been any analysis of, is this an adequate bylaw from administration's perspective?
Chief Lemieux.
What I will say is that we review these bylaws on a regular basis. I believe this one's on the schedule to be reviewed either this year or early next year. So certainly I'll make that point to look at that.
Sure, I was, I guess I was going to make a motion, but I won't make a motion, but just ask administration to review that in terms of when I read it, it only applies to construction, lawn mowing and snow removal, no other activities. And I'd hope that if administration reads it and they concur with that, that it would come for regular review sooner rather than later. But I could be reading it wrong, too.
So I think to your point, that's a conversation, let's, you know, Mr., Chief Lemieux, would you please, could you send an email to all of council based on your interpretation of the bylaw if it doesn't encompass garbage removal? And then, once you receive that information, Counselor Bressi, maybe at a subsequent meeting, you may want to bring forward a motion to review that bylaw earlier than was originally suggested. Okay, Counselor Thiessen.
Yeah, I guess we're looking for a motion to go on the table here right now. I don't, I don't see it, but I'm having struggle, I'm struggling with this one as well. And a big reason why is, is in that area, there's, it's not just the Sunrise Towers, that is the big garbage disposal units. You've got the churches, garbage disposal, Brody Manors, all up and down that road. There's lots of dumpsters that are a block away from potentially Ms. Everett's house. So when she said Monday, Wednesday, Friday, this is happening all the time. I used to live in an apartment, we'd pick up garbage, we'd have a garbage picked up on Wednesday every day or every week. So that just tells me that if this is happening more frequently, chances are either Sunrise Towers has a lot of garbage, or we might be dealing with multiple sites and one site is getting, getting the hardest part of it. So to be able to pinpoint that, I agree with Counselor Plot, like if we, if we blanket, if we blanket a bylaw across the area that says not till 10 or 9 or 8, that's, that's essentially legislating another person's business. But I'm interested to see what might come back because there might be a lever that we can pull. Even an hour later might, might do all the difference if we find that that's possible. But I'm not in the mood to change anything here today, and, and so I will just make a motion that we receive Ms. Everett's presentation for information.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Yeah, this, to your point, this is not the first time we've heard about garbage pickup from other facilities around our community, multifamily type facilities, apartment buildings, where the garbage removal organization comes early morning based on their schedule that suits how they operate their business. In order for us to shorten that time, we don't even know if it's possible for them to operate in that certain amount of time. So I think I will support your motion. I look forward to the information from Chief Lemieux and also potentially other conversations in regards to this. Thanks. Seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call the question on this motion. That carries unanimously. All right, so we have no notices of motions, we're not taking a recess tonight, and we will now go to council member reports. I'm going to start with Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Wow, this is, this is a long time coming. Normally I'm the first, and I went through a bit of a dry spell there, so I appreciate it. So just to go through this quickly, I do have a long list, I don't want to take anybody else's committee's business, but on March 22nd, as far as my external appointments, we met with the Grand Spirit Foundation for a general board meeting. We went over the audited financial statements as well as United Shareholders Agreement with the Atkinson Group to discuss the development of the Smithlands. And besides that, nothing else outside of typical board standard duties applied to that, but I thought council might be interested to hear those couple of things. On March 10th through 13th, actually, I spent quite a bit of time out of town these last few weeks, but I had the absolute privilege to emcee for ASHA Alberta Seniors and Community Housing and their Home for Housing 2024 conference, which went over really, really well. I was really happy. Not only did I not drop the ball for ASHA, I didn't drop the ball for council, and hopefully we're going to see an increased number of attendees, which we saw nearly sold out this year. Next year's ASHA's 60th anniversary and the conference for Home for Housing will be in Edmonton on April 6th tonight. So I encourage everybody to put that in their rolodex for dates in the future for 2025. From there, I drove from Calgary to Edmonton for the Alberta Muni Spring Caucus, which is quite, quite an event. It's nice when you get to speak with the ministers and the MLAs and you get to ask them those questions, especially when the premier shows up and takes questions from us leaders. So I'd like to just thank Counselor Bressi for his work with Alberta municipalities and for helping to set that up and those opportunities for municipalities across the province to be able to have that one-on-one interaction and ask questions directly of our ministers in an official capacity, that was really, really nice to experience. Then I drove home to watch the last showing of To Share With Love from GPLT, and I have to say kudos to the, to the staff and members, the director, Monte Hoyer, former city of Grand Prairie employee, obviously enjoying retirement as a theater director, did an incredible, fabulous job with a bunch of kids and putting together a very complex play on racism and how sometimes one, one day at a time, one class at a time, you can change the world from a place of bigotry to a place of acceptance for all. So really good, kudos to those people that participated in that. I also had the privilege with several members of council, let's see if I got them all here. I don't want to miss anybody, but I had Counselor O'Connor, Counselor Bressi and myself. I don't know, it was for Iftar. Everything's such a blur, but it was breaking bread with our Islamic community. We got invited to the Golden Age Center and had a really excellent time. Both of our MLA showed up, as did our MP, Chris Workington. So a lot of good conversations there with the members of our, members of our community that we don't typically get to see at any event. So that was really nice to, to be there. And I know there's going to be other stuff, so I'm just going to jump right to today where I had the privilege to talk to about 60 grade six students at Riverstone Elementary School on the function of municipal government. So a big thank you to the teachers there who brought their kids in the class. I thought I was coming in for one class, otherwise I would have called one of you all for backup, probably Mike O'Connor, we play off of each other pretty good when we're with the kids and stuff like that. But it was truly joy, and the kids, as always, had great questions and got to learn a little bit about municipal government and how you can get to where we are. And hopefully I found a few people, people to replace us in about a decade. And that is my report. Thank you very much.
Thanks for that. Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Definitely appreciated my colleagues, Counselors Berg, Thiessen, Mayor Clayton, who came to Municipal Leaders Caucus. So thank you for coming and learning and networking and talked to the ministers and the premier, really appreciate that. As always, I'd love to hear, if there's any way we can make it better for you, even better for you next time, I'd love to hear about that. Really appreciated getting to attend the Rising Above Hope Lives banquet. I know Counselor Berg, Counselor O'Connor were there, but it was a big room of about 800 people. So, oh, Counselor Thiessen was there, too, and my apologies if I missed any, if I missed anybody, but really great to celebrate the work that Rising Above does. I, I appreciate that they, that they did a good job of recognizing the residents of Grand Prairie and their contribution to it, both as individuals and through city support. But the highlight of it for me was hearing about the opening that's happening really soon in Fort St. John of a Rising Above allied program. I got to have dinner with two gentlemen from Peterborough who are opening a Rising Above adjacent program on June 1st, and a gentleman from Kansas who is here to learn about Rising Above, hoping to bring it back to Kansas City. And so it really is one of those Grand Prairie things where there's been innovation, there's been good work, and it's increasing our reputation across North America for the good work that's happening there. So it's awesome when Grand Prairie gets to lead the way for many other cities, as we so often do when it comes to unique and innovative approaches to various social issues. I got to attend a few days of my Institute for Corporate Directors training, and finally done the classroom work for that, so it's great to have that off my docket. And it was really encouraging hearing actually how far ahead our city is of a lot of organizations. Specifically, I, one full day was on managing enterprise resource programs and implementing new ones and other IT initiatives. And the stats of how often those fail miserably and go three, four times over budgets were really sobering. And it's actually, I was surprised by how in the minority we are to have had a really well-done, well-implemented project that was on budget as well. And so really wanted to give, even though it's about years late, a year late, wanted to give an extra kudos to our administration for how well that project went because we're unique, not unique, but we're in the minority of people that have, that go well and not be massively painful. So thank you again to everybody on our administration that did that. And finally, a little one that's close to home, the Disc Golf Club had its AGM. We have a new president, so congratulations, Sam McCollum, who's going to be the new president. And we've got five new board members who I don't think have ever served on boards before. So thank you to all the volunteers who stepped up. I'm looking forward to working with them to further this recreational pursuit in our community. with them to further this recreational pursuit in our community that's free for people to use.
Thanks for that, Counselor Bressi. Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. It was a fairly busy two weeks for me, but I'll highlight some of the ones that stood out in my mind as successful events that were held in the city. Trades Cafe Youth Career Expo. I got there at 9 o'clock, and I left there at around 2 o'clock. And there was over 2,000 kids, from Peace River to Grand Cache, to Valley View, to almost the BC border. And I don't know how many exhibitors were there, but it was very well-attended, and good resources available to the youth that were looking for a career in the future. And with that, many of the departments of the city worked together. They started off thinking, maybe we'll just do a small one. By the time they went around and started adding things, they had a number of departments that had to be included. And kudos to all the departments that took place, took part in this first-of-career expo. And it was much appreciated by all. I also attended City Hall here, where we had St. Cateri Catholic School come in for a city hall visit. I had Mr. Mike O'Connor, the professor beyond. I was helping him. And we had an hour and a half with those young people, and they were quite impressed with how the city works, and all the processes that we have to go through. On Friday, I attended the Grand Prairie Fire Department Awards and Recognition, and kudos to everyone that won an award. And thank you for your service. Saturday, or Sun, Sunday, I attended the Grand Prairie Storm and Calgary Canucks game. Grand Prairie Storm did a great job, just come up a little bit short, but you know, both teams played exceptionally well. And I spent the first little bit at Winnipeg, at the Sports Event Congress. I mentioned it at committee meeting, that everybody knew about Grand Prairie. It didn't matter if they were an event organizer, or if they were a program, you name it. They knew where Grand Prairie was, and they were, couldn't figure out why Grand Prairie was so successful in the bids that we were getting. And so that was the conversation, met some great people. And also, at the RMA, I attended, was a little down in the weather, that the flu got me, but I did attend most of the sessions. Didn't attend any of the evening sessions. And with that, that was my report.
Thanks for that, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Well, I was away for the majority of the last couple weeks.
Why were you away?
So I'd like to thank my colleagues, and administrative colleagues for keeping up the fort. I had a wedding to attend.
What was your wedding?
Okay, my wedding, okay. So thank you to everybody for everything they do while I was gone. I will be honest, I didn't really think about you too much. I was, and as far as I was, I can honestly tell you that anybody I met did not know where Grand Prairie was. So I had no trouble telling them, but, you know, we drifted off to other subjects fairly quickly. So that's it for me. Oh, I am looking forward to the state of the city tomorrow. So I'll be back to work and, and have some news for you in two weeks. No.
Okay, we're gonna move on.
But I'll be doing something.
Counselor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm, I'm hurting here. Okay. Attended the Alberta Health Engagement Session on March 12. Went to RMA in Edmonton, attended a police commission meeting at their, at the open session. Went to Native Counselling Services at Theresa Sargent Hall. Of course, did a visit with Mr. O'Toole Extraordinaire with the Ceteri Catholic School Visit. Brought greetings to the Swan City Soccer Association Year End, you gotta say this three times, Year End Awards and Banquet. They had over 400 attendees, and have seen a significant amount of growth, and they're up to 15 teams coming into this next season. Then went from there to the Grand Prairie Fire Department Awards. So moved by the passion and the commitment that the Grand Prairie Fire Department has shown. So heart goes out to them. And two special awards were handed out to members of their association, and very heart-moving. And then went to the Hope Lives Rising Above fundraiser. First time I've seen a pig go for $8,000. And then they put another pig up, and it went for $8,000 as well. So, yeah, whatever. It was cool. And a $2,000 pie. So anyway, they raised, I'm not sure how official it is, $334,000, $82,000 more than last year. And so kudos to the board, and to everyone there. It was a very, very well-done event. And went to the Storm Hockey A game, and sadly, go Storm. Thank you, Mayor Clayton.
Thanks, Counselor O'Connor. Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Probably one of my busiest weeks, week and a half on council. It's my turn as deputy mayor, and the mayor was out of town. So got, got to see how hard she works on a daily basis. So that's a relatively long list. Alberta Muni's, I attended that in Edmonton. And again, having the chat with 16 ministers and the premier, and asking questions, but also learning about some of the struggles that are happening with our neighboring communities, or, or some of them that we have. And it's a greater issue. So we're all rowing in the same direction to help improve each of our cities collaboratively. Attended a Northwestern Polytechnic Strategic Plan Focus Group. And that's just to kind of gauge community organizations, and what they love to see, and where Northwestern Polytechnic is headed. And again, I say this a lot, I really am a fan of the new president, Vanessa Shane, along with the VP Cindy Park. They're both doing great work there. It's great to see them in that position. Attended Chief Preben's Flag Ceremony at the Fire Hall, and the retirement of the flag. Terrific ceremony. And again, thank you very much, Chief, for 40 years of dedicated work. Got to give greetings on behalf of the city down at the museum, early Saturday morning, for the Elder Cultural Teachings. And this was quite interesting. They brought in some elders from Central Alberta Treaty VI. And they were not only teaching, but telling stories. And come spring, it's the time to go to work, as opposed to the storytelling. So over the winter is storytelling season, because it is cold. But with the weather warming up, the, the shift changes from storytelling to hunting and gathering. Also met with the chief and two councillors with Sturgeon Lake Cree Nation. We discussed some grants and opportunities and partnerships that we can work collaboratively with them around economic development, along with cultural collaboration. Counselor Blackmore and I had the pleasure of hosting Francophone tour here in the council chambers. And we had a lot of fun. Counselor Blackmore set up a couple of questions, and we, we played city council. And what was great is some of the personalities that picked the random seats mirrored some of the, the nameplates on here. And the person that was sitting at Counselor Bressi was the one that had the most questions and made the most motions. So it was the chair, yeah. So it was, it was a lot of fun. And then from there, we went out and read a proclamation. It was supposed to happen in here, but there was a lot more students that we could pack in here. So it was outside, in the big fluffy snow. So it was a little bit of an experience in itself. So thank you to them. So I read the Francophone proclamation that day. Gave greetings on behalf of the city at the Alberta Mixed Curling Championships at the Grand Prairie Curling Centre, first-class facility. Got to compliment the food, 10 out of 10. I misplayed the buffet, and the very last thing in there was the blueberry salmon. So I attended, I think, three or four other buffets later that week, and didn't make the same mistake. Congratulations to County of GP Counselor Kurt Balderton on his win for the Alberta Mixed Curling Championships. Attended the Youth Career Expo. That was federally funded through a grant. 2,000 students attended that, or were invited, and all of them for free. Almost 3,000, thank you, Counselor Blackmore. Almost 3,000 attended. The booths were free due to the grant, and transportation, and everything was covered through that grant. And so as we look to develop our workforce, it's a great program. I even had a chance to chat with a mom and her son. And I just asked where they had been, because they were from out of town. And so I asked the young guy what he wanted to do. And he said, I want to get into forestry. I didn't know that was a job. And so that, that's the kind of things that this event does, is it opens up the world to our children. I gave a proclamation for the celebration of diversity at Northwestern Polytechnic. And that was actually quite, quite nice. It was International Day for the End of Racial Discrimination. And it was delivered at the cafeteria, the cafe, at Northwest Polytechnic. And just looking at the cultural diversity of the students was terrific, and I knew that I was in the right environment to deliver that. So thank you to Northwestern Polytechnic for the invitation. Gave greetings to the Native Counselling Services of Alberta. They had a cultural gathering at the Theresa Sargent Hall. Had the pleasure of stuffing Counselor O'Connor's pockets with some chocolate eggs. So, so we have a little bit of fun at these different things. So a little bit of an Easter celebration there. Attended the Chamber Roundtable and gave an update on the city activities and priorities. And coming out of that, it just shows how woven our, our community is, and how we're all working together to build a stronger community, and a wonderful event. Gave greetings on behalf of the city at the Grand Prairie Fire Department Awards and Recognition Ceremony. Again, props to Chief Preben at that. And our own Chief Le Mu was dressed in his full uniform, and looked really sharp. It was great to see. And again, much of the awards were handed around the wildfires of last year, and how people stepped up, and we worked together as a community. Attended the Hope Lives banquet for Rising Above. They do great work in our community, as also.
She's the chair of that one. My highlight was the two school events with Counselor Bressi and the kids. And last term, I didn't do a lot of those events, but I'm absolutely loving them this year, and trying to get as many of them in. For members of the public that aren't aware, the city council gets invited, and we do a lot of tours in here with grade six and, and other students, and also go to schools in the community. And it's just, it's a really big, it's really fun, like, like Counselor Berg mentioned, of how they mirror some of our personalities when they set up here. I always love the questions they ask, because you just, it makes you wonder who their parents are, because, you know, there's some pretty sophisticated questions asked from some of these kids. So always, always enjoy it. But that's my highlights from the last two weeks. Thank you.
Counselor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I have a, a few things I attended that are a little bit different, so we'll talk about those. I attended Musquea Board Meeting to see where they're at with their designs for the Musquea Medical Centre, that is anticipated to be built right in front of Grand Prairie Regional Hospital. This will bring a training opportunity for rural doctors to Grand Prairie, as well as provide a platform for specialists to provide service to us. So we're really looking forward to that. The design process is long and complicated, as we all know, but I'm very much encouraged by what I see at that table, particularly because the Musquea Board is a volunteer board, board-driven, community volunteers, that is not a government, it's not a government initiative. It's a private Grand Prairie citizen initiative that kicked off, I don't know, maybe five or six years ago, and is really starting to get headway, and I congratulate them on that. I also, as Counselor Plott mentioned, attended Airport Commission Meeting. Really, the, most of the information that was provided at that meeting came through the audited financial statements. It's always, it's always reassuring when the auditor's letter management really has nothing to say, when all it says is, everything you're doing looks good. That's always reassuring. And that was the case for the audited financial statements. Those statements now come to the city to be included in our annual report. So I know that Chief White Way will be looking forward to seeing those. I attended the Youth Employment Fair as well. And I just wanted to mention a couple of things. At that fair, there was 102 unique exhibitors and 145 booths. So really, the business community and the educational community around us really saw the value in that fair, and certainly participated. Many of the booths were very, very interactive, particularly Northwest Polytechnic, where kids could work on motors for Harleys, they could do some agricultural veterinary medicine. There was all kinds of really, really cool things. If you were at the Creative Ink booth, you could tattoo on artificial skin. There was some surveyors who, their booth was traveling throughout the whole building. So if you were interested in surveying, they would help you survey the building itself. So I just was so impressed with how much participation there was from the business community, and how unique they chose to present their opportunities for employment. Then I attended the Chamber Roundtable on behalf of Grand Prairie Regional Airport. Again, really interesting to hear from so many different people in the business community, of how all of our interests interlock with each other. And finally, I wanted to talk about the Peace Health Advisory Council. I attended probably three meetings with Peace Health Advisory Council in the last four weeks. The main one that provided the most information for our, our public took place on March 20. And we got a review of the retention of healthcare professionals within the Peace Health Advisory Council, which reaches from Grand Cache to Manning and Fox Creek relative about to the BC border. So out of, in that area, there are, there are a lot of shortages in a lot of different areas, not just in physicians and surgeons. So in healthcare professionals, for example, which would include LPNs, RNs, everything from x-ray technicians, all of those kinds of jobs, there are currently 45 positions available at our hospital. 12 of those positions are for LPNs, and 17 are for RNs. And then the rest are kind of scattered throughout all of those other specialties and skills that we require to keep our health care's facilities running. Of course, we've talked at this table so much about the attraction and retention of healthcare professionals, particularly focusing on doctors and specialists. So we have some good news there. So in 2023, there were 21 new specialists and doctors, including two family doctors, who moved to Grand Prairie and set up practice. And we have another family doctor expected shortly in 2024. And as far as, you know, healthcare, attracting healthcare professionals is a competition. We're in competition with every other organization, every other hospital in Canada, every other hospital in the US, across the world. And so it was reassuring to hear that across the North Region, which is basically Edmonton North in the entire province, out of the 35 incoming doctors, 19 of them are coming to the Peace Region to practice medicine. So we have done an excellent job of attracting and retaining healthcare professionals. It's not time to slack off, it's time to keep pushing further ahead. But I'm really reassured by the input and the support that I see in the community, and in the various organizations that work towards that goal, that we are making gains. And there, there will be a day when I can sit at this table and say that most people in Grand Prairie have a family doctor. And that's everything I have, Mayor Clayton.
Thanks for your report, Counselor Blackmore. Some of the items that I attended were already mentioned. I'll go relatively quickly. Had the pleasure of joining the Alberta Health Engagement Session, where it was a great opportunity to have conversations around the table, around what was working, what's not working in healthcare. Also attended, with our county council colleagues and the CAO, a Northwest Polytechnic Strategic Planning Session. Had the pleasure of meeting Damar Anderson. And if you're not familiar with Damar Anderson, he has probably the most popular podcast in Northern Alberta, I would say. It's called D'Anderson's. He's a gentleman who has taken it upon himself to tell the great things about living in Grand Prairie, what you need to know if you're moving here, and what you should consider. Grand Prairie, what you need to know if you're moving here, and what you should consider if you're going to think about moving here. Many of the healthcare professionals that I've met over our initiative of engaging with potential healthcare professionals, used his podcast to learn more about our community, and he himself, the information that he shares is, was the reason that they were happy to come here, and then we were just happy to close that deal. But he really is an incredible human being, I'm going to do a podcast with him and his wife in the next few weeks, and just if you have a chance, check it out on YouTube, D' Anderson's, it's quite funny, quite educational and great information. With my colleagues, attended the Alberta Municipality Spring Caucus, I thought there was great conversations. Kudos to councillor Bressi for the breakout session of Midsize City elected, that's a kind of a rowdy group because we're all pretty passionate, so great job on trying to form a conversation out of that.
Sorry, point of order, Mayor Clayton.
I'm not the one.
There was one particular rowdy mayor.
I know, and Mayor Brown from Agri really should settle down. Yes, I agree. So anyways, at that, had the opportunity to meet with MLA Hunter and talk about agribusiness opportunities. Also, really enjoyed the conversation and the questions for premier Smith in regards to what's missing for other municipalities other than Edmonton and Calgary. And I think that that was a great opportunity for her to hear information that we're all pretty much on the same page, that there are needs in other communities, and so I really enjoyed that session. Also, during that time, I attended the Alberta Chambers Political Action Day, which was an evening event, had the opportunity to sit with minister Nixon, talk about our concerns in regards to housing, our concerns in regards to the fact that the federal government failed to recognize the needs of mid-sized cities in Alberta. So, that was a privilege that I had to sit with minister Nixon and talk about what is potential in regards to collaboration with the province in, in the, in the funding needs for multifamily at the mid-sized city level and particularly in Grand Prairie. Following that, I don't know if you noticed, but MLA Nolan Dick brought that to focus in legislature earlier this week potentially, maybe last week, I don't recall the exact date, but it's something that is on the top of many people's minds. While I was there, I also had a Community Rail Advocacy Alliance, it's the second year of the organization that has approximately 30 members from municipalities to Wheat and Barley, regional economic development associations, rail companies, formalizing the message to advocate to CN and the federal government in regards to rail service disparities. So, that was a good conversation. From there, I, as mentioned, went with chief McEckren to SARAH Week, which is an opportunity really for us to highlight investment opportunities in the region. Attended with, with the county of Grand Prairie where we both had the opportunity to speak at a session that was called Doing Business in Canada, where we highlighted our region. We talked about energy investment opportunities, we talked about things that people in, at the conference weren't familiar with about our region. We talked about at a Canada to Texas Chamber of Commerce Dinner, had an opportunity to highlight our region, really just getting the word out there that the United States doesn't have a lot of information about how large of an energy contributor we are to the region. We have resources that may be piped right out of the Gulf in Texas that came from our backyard, and people don't forget about that. So, energy is obviously alive and well in this region, but it was really an opportunity to talk about what the potential looks like, not only in traditional fossil fuels but also in renewables. So, it was a great conversation and a really busy few days. From there, I had the opportunity to attend a couple-day conference called the Future of Food. It highlighted the opportunities in agribusinesses where we talked about forging partnerships between agribusiness and health and medicine, and how you can commercialize on those potential opportunities in that partnership. It was ourselves, the county, Northwest Polytech, other municipalities such as Strathcona County and LaDuke, Invest Alberta was there. And those conversations, you know, really elementary or early in the stage in regards to what the future could be, but opening those conversations around research through Northwest Polytech and the National Bee Diagnostic Centre, grain producers and growers and agricultural business opportunities in our region. So, it was a busy couple of days, but it was very valuable conversations. Councillor Plott, Plott highlighted the school visits, and I'll just say it again, if you are a teacher or a principal or work in the education system, these school visits are an opportunity for you to learn not only what municipal government does, but really to engage youth in politics. It's important for youth to learn at an early age when they can vote, what it means to vote, the privilege that we have to vote, and what municipal government does on a daily basis. As with all of us around the table, sad to see the storm losing overtime, wanted to thank the organization for the work that they put in for the season. There, you know, we continue to be number one and number two in attendance in the league. I know they are forging and forward on potential other conversations on growing the league, growing the exposure to that team. Their sponsorship continues to grow, and so they were that close to going to the next round, so congratulations to them on a, on a good season. I wanted to thank councillor Berg, as he mentioned. For those who are watching who aren't familiar, deputy mayors, they rotate about eight weeks. Each councillor gets between six and eight weeks, depending on how the schedule falls, and it's, they don't get paid extra, they still have their regular council duties, many of my councillor colleagues work, and then when I'm busy, they go to events and commitments that I'm unable to attend. So, they put in the extra time, it's something that they do with a lot of pride, and I'm really proud of the work that my colleagues do. It was very busy for councillor Berg, thank you to him for his time, because I know that as a small business owner, he's also extremely busy. But as mentioned, this is something that we rotate through, they don't get extra pay, and they just willingly do the work, so thank you. I also just wanted to, I heard today there was less than a handful, so let's say three tickets left to the State of the City. The State of the City is something that has been going on for many, many years. Previously, it had been facilitated through the Chamber of Commerce. This year, we wanted to change up the conversation a little bit, and so you're not, you're going to hear less from me and more from leaders of four organizations, four significant organizations in our community. You'll hear from our CAO, you'll hear from the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, as well as the president of Northwest Polytechnic, and you'll also hear from superintendent John Resbit from the Grand Prairie Police Service. So, me drilling them for a change with the questions and making it, and squirming their seat, but really asking questions on behalf of the city of Grand Prairie, so you can hear from a senior leadership perspective how we're doing in collaboration, how we're doing in attraction and retention of great employees and professionals to our community. So, looking forward to the conversation. It was, it's a lunch event, so there is a cost. However, as it's almost sold out, you can watch the event for free following on YouTube. So, if you're not able to get a ticket for tomorrow, you will be able to watch it online. And I think that's a great piece of information that people may want to tune in after. And, and something that came out of a conversation today with councils, we're going to work on ways that people can engage with us at public events in a different sort of than we've done in the past. So, lots of things on the horizon. As always, hardest-working council I've had the pleasure to work with, great team that we have here in the city that I'm very proud to be part of. So, I thank you for your time tonight, and I'll call the meeting adjourned.